Well, welcome everybody. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce ourselves today. Warwickshire County Council, we're providing a bit of insight into make energy your business. The aim of today's session is really just to give a little bit of the flavour of what's happening. It's quite turbulent times for everybody at the moment. And given everything that's going on in terms of energy, it is quite challenging times. And we did at Warwickshire County Council see a real need for businesses. And we were being asked by a range of different businesses for some guidance and some support. So we really thought for ourselves, it was really important to be at the forefront of that, to be able to provide that intel. And we've teamed up with NFU, National Farmers Union, and also NFU Energy today, just to give them a little bit more of a flavour of what's actually, what does the energy, what does it look like, what does it mean, what are the challenges? I'm just going to run through the presentation. So my name's Hardik Sandhu. I should introduce myself. I'm actually from the Economy and Skills team. And my title is Business Investment Growth Delivery Lead. In terms of what we do at Warwickshire County Council, it's a huge team that we offer support and guidance for businesses in the Economy and Skills team. But particularly myself, I'm here really in terms of the delivery side, to be able to support businesses with my colleague, Robert is here as well. Robert, I don't know if you want to just give everybody a bit of a wave. But I have business advisors on the ground that are able to support businesses. So give them that guidance and support of sort of working through the challenges at the moment, helping them grow. And it's selective finance. So if they're looking at growing their businesses and then it needs for finance needs, we're able to support those businesses. We deliver a range of support. I'm going to come on to that shortly. So I'm not going to go too much detail into that. I'm just going to run through today's agenda. Any questions? No? Okay, so today's agenda. It's going to be focusing firstly from NFU Energy. And we're really lucky to have Verinda Singh and Joshua Robinson to talk about the current situation, the challenges that businesses are facing, as I've mentioned. What does the energy cap mean for businesses as well? And that's really, really important on the ground. What does that actually, in terms of the practicalities, what does that mean? And tips and hints, practical ways to reduce your usage. The costs are the costs, but actually, what can we do to make those interventions to reduce those costs and bring those down? And the importance of an energy audit. It's always wise to get an energy audit organised. And what does that involve? And what can the benefits of that be as well? And that's really important. And then in terms of the future, we'll be looking at some of the renewable options as well. So thinking about what could you do in terms of your future strategy to save energy in the long term and save those costs? And have a better sort of carbon footprint as well. And those are elements that are really, really important within businesses and in your businesses as well. It will be followed by a little bit of information from myself about the business support and funding. Today's session is really about the agricultural sector. But actually, we're doing another session on Thursday, which is with regards to retail, leisure, tourism and hospitality. And again, it's a very similar format. And there are certain sort of funding packages available for that particular sector that you might be interested to come along to. Appreciate with some of the agricultural sector, they kind of drift into the other sectors as well. So again, if you wish to come along, please do get yourself booked on to Eventbrite on there. And then we'll be talking about future support as well. And George Bostock from NFU, National Farmers Union, will be talking about some of the regional webinars that are available and some of the support mechanisms that are available as well for businesses that need to speak to somebody directly. And then there'll be an opportunity just to open the floor for any Q and A. Okay. If I could pass you on to Verinda, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. I think Josh will be starting it. Are you going to share the presentation?
Do you want me to start my business support and funding? Would that be easier? Shall I do my presentation? We'll do a bit of a rejig first.
It's up to you.
Yeah, I'll start. I've waited for Joshua to come in.
Okay.
That's absolutely fine. I'm listening to things.
I've been here.
Oh, you're here.
I'm here already. Yeah, sorry.
That's fine. Let me stop sharing and then we can get you to crack on with your presentation.
Okay.
Over to you both.
Yep, so I suppose it's myself starting off. What I'm going to cover off is I'm going to cover off where the market's been in the last 12 months. The impact of EBRs, the government scheme to try and get people through the winter primarily.
Sorry, can I just, we haven't got our presentation shared, Josh? Hardik, are you gonna?
I can share it. I've got a copy here as well.
We can't hear you, Hardik. You're on mute.
Just bear me for a second and I'll share the presentation. Okay, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Perfect.
Okay, so yeah, so just a bit of an overview. So I'll be covering off the key market conditions in the last 12 months. A little bit about EBRs, which is the government scheme on getting people through winter. A bit of an outlook on the market, what positives are on the horizon. Will prices actually ever go back down? And then I'll pass it over to V. V will be able to talk about the renewable side of things. So Hardik, if you could just move on to the next slide. So this is our offices, a little bit about ourselves. We're NFU Energy. Effectively, we're here to, we're an agricultural energy consultancy. We're owned by the NFU. And effectively, we're here to assist with all energy requirements, really. Anything from signing a new energy contract, new connections. We have the renewables team. They can come out, do energy audits. And they look at wider scale things, do farm visits, site visits for you. And basically, we provide member benefits, also the wider, the wider market as well. If you're a non-member, it is something we can still assist with as well. And that's a little image of our offices. We're based at Stonely Park in Kenilworth, same as the NFU headquarters. And then we've got about 50 members of staff. Really, really nice company to work for, if I'm honest with you. But yeah, also really, really helpful. One of our key things is we are extremely transparent. So in terms of our contracts, any commissions, we're very transparent on everything from the offset. So that's just a little bit about ourselves. If you could just move the slide on for me. So these are the six key areas that we cover off as a business. So these are a bit of our offerings. I'll leave it for V to talk about compliance, consultancy, renewables. My primary one is really the contracts. So yeah, V will probably touch back on that a little bit more detail. So if you could move on one for me, please. Yep. So this is my speciality, or I like to think it is. The key market conditions over the last 12 months. Why have prices got to where they are at the moment? I've just put it in six key images, really. The first one in the top left, that will be the IPA plant at Selinge in Kent. So around about a year ago, just over a year ago, September 2021, there was a major fire at an interconnector in Kent. This was an export connector that sends a lot of energy into France now. But at the time, it was receiving a lot of energy from France. Energy market prices historically had been about 15 pence a unit. And with that fire taking place, energy prices went instantly up by about 40%. They were sitting at around about 27, 28 pence a unit overnight. One of the key things, everybody thought that there would be a really, really quick recovery. The timeline on repairs was pushed back a little bit. And by December, there were concerns about the cost of energy going forward. As we got into January 2022, we seen a little bit of a stabilisation on the price. It looked like the repairs were going to be conducted, albeit slightly later. And then we'll move on to slide two. Then we had murmurs of Russian troops gathering around. Sorry, I think you've gone on one. Yeah, so yeah, so picture two, sorry. We had murmurs of Russian troops gathering around Ukraine. Instantly, the market assessed this, put a bit of a risk premium on prices. So where they had gone to about 25, 26 pence at the time, instantly that went up about another 10 to 15 pence. That subsequently, but worse, and it resulted in the invasion. From there, energy security was at risk, both throughout Europe and into the UK. And energy market prices have never been the same since. We seen what was then around about 40 pence with a risk premium built in. All of a sudden, it went to 60 pence, 65 pence pretty much overnight. Slide three, or picture three there, that was the Nord Stream lines. So Nord Stream 1, Nord Stream 2, they are two of the main cable lines that go from Russia into Germany. At the time, they were supplying about 40% of all the energy used in Germany, as well as being a really, really good hobby and getting energy around Europe with the war and with the sanctions that then took place off the back of that. And those pipelines were slowly reduced. They went from 100% capacity down to 60%, down to 40%. Then Russia claimed that they needed maintenance, so they took them offline for a while. All of these just added further premiums into the market. At the same time that that happened over in France, France are a really big nuclear generator of energy. And they have about 52 nuclear plants in France. France announced that 26 of their plants were being taken offline at pretty much the same time. That had a really, really bad impact on the cost of energy because whilst we didn't have the energy coming through from Russia, also Europe wasn't able to generate its own energy at the same time. That again, just put more premiums onto price. Genuine conversation started about this shortage of energy for the upcoming winter. And that was as far back as June. Picture five, that would be a dam in Norway, the Norwegian continental shelf, as it's known. So at the time that we were having these problems with Russia and France, Norway looked at their own energy security first. So with the drought that we had through the summer, hydro reserves were naturally lower than what we would have expected them to be at that time of year. Norway at the time made the decision that they would look after their country first before sending LNG out over into Europe. LNG liquefied natural gas comes via a cargo ship. And it is the alternative to Russian gas at the moment. After all of those things happened, LNG, as I've said, became the new norm. Almost a year to the date that we had the fire in Kent. There was another major fire at an interconnector in Texas, a place called Freeport. That was also an LNG plant, which had 70% of all of their LNG was bound for Europe. So again, it had a really big impact. It stopped energy in its tracks going into Europe. And we started to see energy market prices around about August. They were exceeding a pound a kilowatt hour. So they were almost nine, nine times higher than what they were a year prior. We started to see the Russian price cap. So Europe were meeting together. EU were meeting, trying to find ways of minimising the impact. Germany themselves, that were really, really large, sort of, they depended on Russian gas really heavily. What they had started to do then is they've started to build their own LNG plant. So it's a floating plant where they can store liquefied natural gas. Because of the reliance on pipelines in the past, they had never had an alternative method of storing it. So now that's an alternative. In recent months, we've started to see the prices come down a little bit. Hardik, if you could move on to the next slide. So yeah, so in recent months, prices have started to come down slightly. The government have also introduced the Energy Bill Relief Scheme. Now, this is a government support package. The way that people in the market generally see it, it's just a way of tiding people over for the winter. The support is expected to last six months. It was introduced by government on the 8th of September. Those in government at the time, they didn't release much information on it. And with the subsequent changing of government, it became a bit of a grey area. But what they done initially, they said that everybody that had taken out a contract from the 1st of December 2021, which is when they deemed that the energy crisis, that they would be covered with some level of support from the government. And that would cover whether you're in a contract or whether you're not in a contract. The support package runs from the 1st of October 2022 to the 31st of March 2023. So for that six month window, depending on the costs that you paid for your energy, you would receive some level of support from the government. What they outlined to the markets is that they would cap the wholesale cost of energy at 21.1 pence per kilowatt hour, if you're in a contract. If you're not in a contract, they would give you an upper price cap, a 34 and a half pence per kilowatt hour off the out of contract price. But that wouldn't result in the same discount. So what the suppliers are now working on, and this should have begun on the 1st of October, but with the subsequent delays, they're still working on it. They're working on applying a bill credit to the bills. It is likely to be the November round of bills before people will see what that discount is and how it works for them. From our workings out and on government comparisons as well, we would expect the EBRs to reduce bills by approximately 40% over that six month window. If you're in a contract, if you've chosen not to renew your contract or you've totally forgotten and you're out of contract, you'll probably see about a 20% saving on the out of contract prices. Government are really keen on getting everybody into a contract. And if it's a choice that you wait for winter to pass, you wouldn't receive the same level of cover under the EBRs scheme. It does apply to all tariffs, as I've mentioned there. And it's the wholesale cost of the energy that is capped. So the wholesale cost of energy does make up about 40% of the bill. Other areas, including suppliers' profits, third party charges, those are not being looked at by the government at all. There are some exclusions. So businesses that are using gas or electricity to store power, or if you're selling back to the grid, places, they've given examples, places like power stations, pumped hydro, grid level battery storage. If you're using energy to make money, then in short, you wouldn't receive the same level of support from the government. It is a broad application. They've not gone into any detail. But they have said that as part of the government website, they've outlined it on numerous occasions. There is also the genuine concern about people that are not connected to mains gas. Again, with the subsequent changing of government, they outline that there would still be support offered. But they've not gone into any detail on what that support looks like. So we are still waiting for answers on that. And we generally publish blogs on our website as we get updates. We try and keep it as up to date as possible. So if you can move on to the next slide, please, Hardik. Yep. So what we've included here, this is just a graph on whether or not you would be eligible for the EBRs. And this is more for if people do want to come back to it and have a look through it. It will just give you a little bit of guidance, a bit of assistance. What type of level of cover you would receive as well. So it just asks a couple of key questions. When did you renew your contracts? If that was before the 1st of December, then there would be no support under EBRs because it's expected, or the government have put it out there, that you should really have taken a contract at round about maybe 20 pence a unit. So you wouldn't be eligible for support under that scenario. If that contract was taken out after the 1st of December, then there's a little guide there, which will show you what level of support you would receive, depending on what type of contract that you've got there. So if you could move on to the next slide, please. Okay, so next one there is how a supplier is actually calculating the discount. Now, for all of the hours I've spent on this, it's still not clear. It's really, really difficult to work out. We've spoken with a number of suppliers. EDF, as one of the big six suppliers, have told me directly, they have practically given up on trying to work it out. They have said that the 21.1 pence per kilowatt hour, they will just apply that as the whole set price. So for customers that are with EDF, you may see a different level of discount to if you're with somebody else. British Gas is the largest supplier in the UK. Again, massive grey areas there. They've just said that they will suspend bills for September. So your October bill wouldn't actually, wouldn't actually include any discount. You wouldn't receive a bill in October, but you would receive a double discount in November. So yeah, every supplier is doing it very, very differently. What the government are doing, the government are releasing 10 days after the energy is purchased. You can see the graph towards the bottom. 10 days after energy is purchased, they then tell the market what the supplier would have paid for it. Off the back of that, and you can see the two columns on the end. I know it's probably not the most detailed on the picture. But you can see the two end columns on the electricity side. The third column in, so if you can just hover over that one for me, Hardik, reference wholesale price. So it just says under electricity and the reference wholesale price. So the reference wholesale price is what the government determined that the supplier paid for the energy at that point. So you can see there, sorry, I'm getting really close to the screen here. But you can see that they paid about 54 pence per kilowatt hour. And this was for the month of August. By the end of the month, you can see how much energy had gone up. They were paying about 76 pence per kilowatt hour. And that was in the space of a month. Government level of support there was capping the price. It's just the next column across, Hardik. So just one from the end. You can see the government have said it's 21.1 pence per unit. And then the column on the very end would show the level of discount that you would receive under EBRs. Now, like I said, it's really important to remember that this is just one element of the bill. So the discounted price is not the full discount that you will see on the bills. But it is still a very, very grey area and it's constantly progressing. We would expect to have a lot more clarity on it once people start receiving their first bills. And we can make a little bit more sense of it. So just on to the next slide for me, please. I think this is the key question that everybody really wants to know the answer to. Simple question, will prices ever come back down? I've put there, the first thing is nobody knows for definite. For every situation that we've seen over the last 12 months, we didn't see the next one coming. And I don't think anybody did. In terms of positives on the market, the first thing, French nuclear fleet, which is those 52 nuclear generators, they are expecting to reboot them in February 2023. What we've heard already, four of those that they're expecting to reboot have already been pushed back. So as to whether that does happen or not, it's very, very difficult to say. You would expect that some of them will go back online. But whether all of them will be, it's far too difficult to say. Nord Stream 1 and Nord Stream 2, you've probably seen the news reports last month about attacks on the Nord Stream gas lines. It subsequently turned out that there was no lasting damage. Those lines were tested. And whilst they're not pumping any energy into Europe at the moment, they are still there. It's also important to know recent developments. Russia have announced that they will be building a gas line into China, which it would show, or it would, it would give the, give the idea that they are not as keen on supplying energy into Europe regardless of what happens with the war. So it's almost like Russia are future-proofing themselves, but Europe are doing the same thing. Freeport, so that's the LNG plant in Texas. We're also expected to see repairs completed in February 2023. That was recent announcements that have come out in the news. Another one that's not come out on there just yet, and it has really come through in the last few days. Norway are saying that their hydro levels are getting back to where they would expect them to be. So obviously with winter on the horizon, a wet autumn, they are saying their hydro levels are at a higher level, so they are starting to pump a bit more energy. Potentially, you caps on Russian gas. So we have had a lot of meetings on capping the price of Russian oil, capping the price of Russian gas. As to whether it will really have a big impact in the market, it's hard to say because the dependency now has been removed and moved elsewhere. So it's primarily LNG and cargo ships that are bringing that energy in now. So what we would expect to see around about February next year, if these things go to plan, we would expect to see a reduction in the prices. However, we would, it's highly unlikely on our, on our viewpoints that those prices will ever go back down to the 20 and 30 pences that were being paid before. We would probably say that the market would settle somewhere between 40 and 50 pence. Because there is going to be a new way of purchasing energy. Its renewables are going to come into, come to the fore, really. Self-generation is probably going to be the key route going forward. And this is before you even consider the impact of electric vehicles, the change in the market and the willingness to go green and net zero. So self-generation and renewables are really going to come to the, come to the fore. If you just move on to the next slide, and I think that's my last slide. So where can NFU Energy help? So we've got a contracts team here. As I said at the very beginning, we are extremely transparent. We launch a weekly report showing the change in the energy market week to week. Any key changes, any world news that might impact prices. We can give that advice to you very, very quickly. We look at sort of fixed contracts. We run buying groups for members. So if you are a member, then we look at doing preferential deals with suppliers where we group the combined buying power of all of our members. And we request a beneficial price and a discounted price for buying en masse from a supplier. In addition to that, as I've said, we meet for weekly market updates. So it's my job to troll all the news and to work with Cornwall Insights and Third Party Insights Developments and try and keep that information up to date. So if you do check our website out, there'll be a lot of blogs on there. And then we've got the renewable side of things, which V will come on to now. So I'll hand over to V.
Thanks, Josh. Yeah, I'm conscious of the time, Hardik, so I will try and be succinct. Yeah, so Josh has just spoken to us about the energy market and it doesn't seem too positive. So I think that really does emphasise the need now. And back in the past, we could, it could be a direct way to reduce costs by getting a cheaper energy price. That's not as possible now. So we need to look at other methods of bringing down energy costs. And the other direct way of doing it is an energy efficiency audit. So Hardik, do you want to move to the next slide, please? Yeah, so an energy efficiency audit, we as an energy consultancy recommend to any business, the first step that you should take in an ideal world is look to mitigate inefficient energy practices on your current site to really bring down your energy consumption as low as possible. There are some really big potential savings and some of the, some of the responses from the audit, they can be very low cost, but highly rewarding in terms of the money they can save. So to give you an example, an energy audit on average for us can save an individual, give methods of saving from say 10 to 25%. If we go at the lowest rate and on a usage of say 100,000 kilowatts per annum, a 10% saving there would be 10,000 kilowatts over the year and a unit rate of 70 pence, which is what Josh is saying they're at now. And that's 7,000 pounds saving per annum. And the cost, and it's a year on year saving. And the cost of the audit itself is much, much lower than that. So it's definitely something that I feel all businesses should be looking at. Because the pressure is only going to grow in this space. When carbon emissions and all these sort of pressures start to amount as well. We've already seen that for the larger organisations with ESOS. Energy efficiency audits are very applicable in the current market and the prime way to look at bringing down costs. Next slide, Ties, Hardik? Yeah, so once you've managed to mitigate all inefficient energy practices on site or bring down energy use as low as possible, we advise that you sort of amplify those savings by generating your own energy. So that's where the renewable solutions come in. We've set up a new service, which is known as Renewable Energy Solutions Service. And essentially, how that works is we will initially collate your data. So we'll collect a lot of data from you, your bills, your usage, what's happening on site. We'll then make an assessment, which is this service is no cost, no obligation up until the point you're going to proceed with an installation. So we'll do an assessment free of charge effectively, looking at what sort of technology and what, what size of installation is suitable. At that point, we will then pass you through to one of our improved installers. I think we've got eight across the nation and we have got scope to serve the whole nation now. So we will then pass you through to the installer. They'll conduct their own survey and then send you a detailed proposal out, which will give you the costs, return and investment and so on. At that point, we'll receive that back. We'll also recheck that proposal just to make sure that we're happy with everything that's being offered. That point will notify the individual that, yeah, we're happy with the quote. It's fair price and it's a suitable installation for what you've got going on at site. And then that point, the decision falls back on the customer on whether or not you wish to proceed with an installation. I just want to emphasise that solar is really popular now. So the, obviously, the cost of energy has risen greatly. So that's reduced the return investment. But the cost of installation has, and the cost of the parts has decreased, although it is increasing now again, but it has decreased. And then also their efficiency and longevity has improved. And we're seeing similar sort of improvements in the battery space. And along with wind turbines as well, it's been very difficult to get approval for wind turbines in England in the past. We have seen more of a relaxation or a relaxation is imminent in terms of the planning permission there with micro wind turbines. And so we're getting heavily involved in that and we're, we will have. And so we're getting heavily involved in that and we're, we will have a solution and a partner available for other technologies outside of sort of solar and battery, which are the predominant and most popular ones. And the other ones that will be like micro A Ds, ground source heat pumps, air source heat pumps, wind turbines and so on. So, yeah, and it does really help you reach net zero by generating your own energy. And those are the sort of common problems that businesses may face down the line. And next slide, please, Hardeep. Okay, yeah, so this also creates a really good opportunity. So not only can you generate your own energy, but if you're generating a surplus, you can export back to the grid. So previously, pre the crisis, we were seeing unit rates of three, four pence if you're exporting back to the grid. Recently, I've seen eighteen to twenty one pence, so a healthy rise there. And that can also help you increase your income and revenue for for your business. And then also you've got the opportunity, if you do have land, to get involved with the creation and generation of large amounts of energy through solar farms and battery storage sites, which I'll touch on in the next slide. Yeah, this is just, just giving you a bit more information on the Renewable Energy Solutions Service. So not only do we assist with the assessment of it, we can also assist with the funding and the ensuring of it via our partner and sister company N F U Mutual. And we've also got a funding partner that can assist with the installation. So it can be very attractive and we do remain involved from the start to the end. And you do retain ongoing support right the way through. Think it is very important that with these installations, when the lifetime of almost sort of twenty years, that you do have that bit of security behind you and with the clout of the N F U behind you, supporting you, I think that does provide a great benefit there. Next slide, please, Hardeep. Yeah, so this is the large scale Renewable Energy Solution Service. So this is slightly different. This is looking at what I touched on previously, is if you were interested, you had some land and you were looking to lease it to a large scale renewables developer. The sort of scales we'd be looking at, minimum forty acres for solar and battery, that could be anything from one to ten acres. However, with battery, it is a bit more stringent, the criteria, it does need to be close, very close to a substation. Otherwise, it will be ruled out as unfeasible. So that's the first thing, generally in the industry, how these sort of, these sort of projects work is a developer will encounter, will encounter a landowner. And right from the offset, the developer will ask for exclusive rights for the project. They will then contact the D N O and look to get grid connections and what they like to hit of all that. But the, the landowner has given up the exclusive rights of the project at the outset. So we feel that that limits their negotiation and bargaining power. So what we do is we conduct a detailed feasibility study initially, which will look at the cost of getting a grid connection, planning permission, flood risks and a whole host of other obstacles that could potentially prevent or affect the effectiveness of such a project. Once we, it comes back that it's feasible, we can then help you secure a good grid connection. So we work with the very best, Road Knight Taylor, and they operate on a industry average of success rate of obtaining grid, grid connection, their average is eighty five percent. The industry average is only fifteen percent. I'm sure they do pick their targets in a better manner and that's one variable in that. But they also have a better working relationship with the D N O, they work through day in, day out. And they have got a lot of members of staff that previously worked for D N Os. And proof of that is the fact that I've seen, when you obtain grid connection costs, you can have contestable and uncontestable charges. I've seen Road Knight Taylor successfully contest even the uncontestable charges. So they are very well known in this space and are genuine experts. And then at the last stage, once you've got the grid connection and it is feasible, we'll put you in touch with one of our developers. And you'll have all the reports and a grid connection to back you up, saying that this is going ahead. And it really does strengthen your position to negotiate about lease term agreement. Lease, an idea of how lucrative these can be. A thirty megawatt solar farm on a hundred acre site could return you back six to ten million across its lifetime, which is roughly thirty to forty years. And I think with it being such a great lifetime in the lease agreement, the, the need to have somebody like N F U involved is essential. The last thing you need is having twenty years of lease payments, then they disappear, leaving your whole big solar farm on your site and a lot of, a lot of sort of admin work to do regarding that. Next slide, please, Hardeep. Yep, so that's just, yeah, and the last, sorry, that's fine, it's just going on, I've mentioned those as success rate and yeah, the, the last, I think this is one of the last, the electric vehicle charge points. So we are also in this space now and we offer a number of different solutions. So we can assist you with domestic, but just want to touch that if it is a domestic charge point, it can, we can only assist if it's paid for through the company. So we can only assist on commercial sales rather than those. We can also assist at the workplace where the charge point, you can have contactless payments, R F I D cars, make a return off the charge point, modify the rates. And then lastly, we also have a lease agreement here, which is also a no cost solution for you, where you can have a rapid charge point on site. We're partnered with a company called Instavolt. They've got the most popular public network of charge points across the nation. And they're looking for sites that are near A roads, motorways or tourist attractions and so on. And anything along those lines, they'd be very interested to discuss a lease agreement where they could potentially install rapid charge point. They'd make a return from the charge point, you'd make a return from the lease. Yep, next slide, Hardeep. Yeah, and there's more information on our website. Also, Josh and I, I'm sure Hardeep will be willing to provide our contact these time. We're most welcome to any sort of inquiries as well. So, yeah, I'd be more than happy to discuss that with you. And if any, you've got any questions, we'll be here at the end as well. I think that's a stern, Hardeep.
Thank you very much, that was really, really useful, actually. I've, I've learnt absolute loads and I'm sure there'll be some questions shortly as well. I'm just going to run through some presentations from Warwickshire County Council. Again, if you just bear with me for a moment. So in terms of the support that we're able to offer you from Warwickshire County Council. In the economy, I'm just going to touch on the Economy and Skills Team at Warwickshire County Council. We have five teams and just to kind of give you the breadth of the, the type of support that's available. We have Warwickshire Skills Hub. And I think it's really, really important because people don't realise how much support goes into various business support programmes to help economic development across the patch. And I think we're really keen in Economy and Skills to sort of develop that and prosper that high growth economy. And some of these elements are actually all helping us to kind of go in that right, that direction. So in terms of the skills support, there's Employment Skills Team that are working with businesses, providing sort of training that provides, providers and working with schools, ensuring that there is a strong supply of the right skilled staff and residents within locally as well. And I think that's really, really important for future growth. In terms of investing Warwickshire, we have a team that's dedicated as well to those businesses that might be looking at inward investing into the region or going from sort of international investors that are looking at the Warwickshire as a patch. And the team are actually on hand to sort of help and drive that forward. And we sort of work on various sort of priority sectors like your automotive, your creative industries and very many others that are listed in our council plan, to name a few. We also have links on a commercial property search as well facility. So if any of you know of any businesses or you're a business that are looking at expanding and are looking at a commercial site, a unit. So what was, would suggest is that you come and speak to us to find out if that's something that we could help you with. So there is a facility online where we can do some searches to see if there's anything suitable. In terms of business centres, we have about eight business centres across Warwickshire County Council. Sort of across Nantucket, Bedford-on-Avon and Rugby. And some of them also include conference facilities as well. So if anyone's interested or having a meeting with a business, that's really, really important. We also have a Strategy and Commissioning Team. And the aim of this is really to sort of be responsible for seeking those financial and funding opportunities. So in terms of funding for Warwickshire County Council, we've been very lucky in the past for securing European funded programmes. Obviously, that's come to an end. We are looking at opportunities sort of going forward. We have a team that look at external funding to support economic development and drive that forward. And some of the programmes that we support are things such as Start Grow Scale Funding for those businesses. And you may well have heard of some of the Covid recovery funding that some of the businesses that you may well be working with have sort of taken advantage of. We also have a particular programme called Project Warwickshire, which is to support leisure, retail, hospitality and tourism sectors as well. And we also secure funds to support access to funds, access to finance funds as well, just to help those businesses to kind of get to that next stage, take on staff and grow. So again, if you are looking at sort of any, any of those, I would say certainly come and speak to us. Because there could be some funding streams that are available and a good opportunity for you to sort of look at if you are diversifying into, if you're in the agricultural sector and you're diversifying into another sector. If it's retail, not retail, or it might be retail actually, or it could be a glamping site, whatever it might be. I would suggest that you speak to us directly and we can take it from there. The team, the Strategy and Commissioning Team are really sort of focused around sort of managing those funds and working on the grant provisions that are provided. And also looking at future funds, as I mentioned, European funding is, is coming to an end, has come to an end. And some of those programmes that we were delivering are actually finishing in June two thousand and twenty three. So we've got a very small window of those funds and the team are working very hard to look at future sort of shared prosperity fund and how that's going to work going forward. And the Business Investment Growth, which is my, my team. We actually help and support businesses to, with a front facing delivery team to support and offer advice to businesses. And I would say that it's, it's quite a unique service that's available. We are particularly focusing around finance. So if there's a business that's looking at growing, how to sort of grow to that next stage, I would certainly say come and speak to us. There might be some funding streams that are available. We also deliver a range of European funded programmes, including we support on the Innovation Programme, Coventry Warwickshire Innovation, just a business that's looking at innovation, developing new products and services and we can help you and sort of give you some guidance and support on that as well. And we are very lucky at Warwickshire County Council that we have got some funds ourselves in terms of a small capital grant, which I'll touch on shortly as well. This is the range of sort of support that is available in terms of the programmes that I've mentioned. We've got the startup programme that's delivered by Coventry Warwickshire Chamber of Commerce. And that's to support startups and also new businesses that are developing sort of in the first sort of twelve, twenty four month window. We've also got a business ready programme that is delivered by University of Warwick. And this is to help those high tech businesses evolve and develop and and sort of go to that next stage and give them the guidance and support that they really need. Project Warwickshire, which I've mentioned, it's to support the tourism, leisure, hospitality sector. And the Business and Investment Team that I've just mentioned as well, offers the support for finance. So that kind of just sums up all the different sort of support mechanisms that are in place. I'm just going to run through these slides a little bit quicker than I was anticipating. But as you can see, there's various access to funding, finance support that we deliver. And as you can see, there's a range of support there. And there's also a lot of Covid support that we have delivered previously as well. What the team actually does, the Strategy and Commissioning Team, is to have a look at what the needs are of the businesses. And we shape the programmes going forward, determined on the, on the needs as well. So the Warwickshire County Council Small Capital Grant that we deliver, it offers funding from five thousand to thirty five thousand towards cost of capital investments. So if a business is purchasing some capital equipment, the minimum project spend needs to be about twelve and a half thousand pounds plus that. And this is really for those businesses that need that little bit of a support mechanism in place to take on staff, to grow to that next stage, and they wouldn't be able to financially afford to do it themselves. So it's really just to act as that support mechanism to, to help those businesses. Some of the businesses that we, we've helped previously, a new machine that, you know, that a business needed in a manufacturing facility and also refurbishment to create new facilities for more staff. So that, I hope that just gives you an example. But again, I would urge you to come and speak to my Business Investment Growth Team directly. We also have a duplex fund, which are grants of up to, well, it's a hundred thousand pound, up to a hundred thousand pound loan. And forty percent of that are grant funded. And it's supported by Coventry City Council and Warwickshire County Council and managed by an organisation called Coventry and Warwickshire Reinvestment Trust. And some of the examples that businesses have used this fund for, so it's part grant, part loan, refurbishment and fit out of a salon, a resurfacing of a karting track. So some of you might be looking at diversifying in other areas. And again, I would urge you to, to come and speak to us so we can route you to the right provision and support. And the Warwickshire Recovery Investment Fund is a fund which has been launched by Warwickshire County Council. Warwickshire County Council have been very bold in sort of making this step. And this is something that's positive, that's come out of Covid, I have to say, and recovery. And there's three arms to, to the fund. And this is really to help those businesses recover. So there's a ninety million pot of funds for business and investment growth. And these are those high growth businesses that are looking at sort of growing. And it's capital spend and looking at purchasing equipment, growing mergers and acquisitions, so whatever it might be. Again, come and speak to us. There's a smaller pot of fund, which is a thousand pounds up to a hundred thousand. And this is to help and support those smaller business, social enterprises, startups. And those real small businesses that really need that local support to, to grow and evolve. And then there's a Property Infrastructure Fund, which is forty million. And this is to help those property developers that are looking at sort of, there, there could be, for example, a, a unit that needs to be commercialised, we need to get the infrastructure in place, the energy, the electricity, all that infrastructure. So you can see that there's a pot of fund for various different businesses to, to kind of support the smaller businesses, the, the larger businesses, but also the, the property and infrastructure for Warwickshire as well. And I suppose for, for the agricultural businesses, the R I F, the Warwickshire Recovery and Investment Fund is a way to sort of put your growth plans into place. And looking at N F U research, it's really recently revealed that farmers across the UK were asked about diversification. One thousand six hundred and fifty two. And actually, over one third of businesses said that, that they would look at a third party were already utilising land for non-farming, non-farming activities. So that was quite interesting that if you're in the agricultural sector, you might be looking at diversifying into other areas such as it might be, it could be renewables, it could be holiday accommodation. So again, what I would say, there are funds available from a thousand pounds to ten million, and this is a commercial loan to support your businesses to, to kind of grow to that next stage. This is an example of a business that we have supported through the, the R I F. It's a specialist residential care facility in Nantucket, helping sort of young children from the ages of six up until the ages of eighteen and helping them through sort of a facility where they are able to secure support with support needs that they have. And the actual Forge Care Facility is quite unique in, in what they're actually doing. It's a residential care facility aimed at helping that target group. And there's four different units that at the moment that are sort of taking place. But this is as an example to show that the fund was used to, to create that space for, for the young. So again, that there are different businesses that will be using the pot of funds for different things. And again, what I would urge you to do, if you have got an inquiry that you are looking at funds at the moment and looking at speaking to your bank, come and speak to us as well. And we can see what, how we can support you to, to sort of guide you through that. And our contact details are there. So if you have any questions, please do give, give us a call directly or look us up online as well. Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm just going to pass you on to George from the N F U.
Thank you, Hardeep, can you hear me, is the microphone working?
Yes, I can hear you. I'm just going to get your presentation up.
Yeah, well, say Harley presentation, just one slide for me, but I'll be very quick and we're still finished on time.
There you go.
So, yeah, I'm not going to say too much. Say a huge amount of what I could cover has all been covered quite rightly by N F U Energy. Obviously, we're, we're two sides of the same coin, code by the same organisation, so I'm not going to repeat anything. But primarily, I, I just wanted to introduce myself really. So I'm George Bostock, I work as the N F U County Advisor for Warwickshire. So there's two key parts to my role, which include liaising with stakeholders across Warwickshire, including MPs, councils and police, for example. including MPs, councils and police, for example, making sure that they are aware of farming and, and working with them to support the industry. Indeed, this meeting came about from a discussion I had with Hadi several weeks ago to discuss business support that might be available from Warwickshire County Council towards the agricultural sector. The second part of my role is very much to assist NFU members when it, to assist NFU members when issues arise. So we've got eight hundred plus members in Warwickshire, roughly fifty thousand members across England and Wales as a whole. But that's not to say that non-members will be ignored. And if any farmers watching this back have any issues, you know, my email is on the screen there, so hopefully these slides will be forwarded on into the future. So feel free to contact me, whether that's about energy or anything else, including planning, welfare, bovine TB, literally anything that impacts farmers. So the NFU is there to help. So whether you're a member or not, I'm there to support and hopefully we can get you involved. So yeah, that's a brief introduction of what the NFU does. Like I say, we've got fifty thousand members, we're a trade association lobbying local, regional, national and international on a host of matters. As you can see there on photo, we've already had meetings with Rishi Sunak. We've had meetings with Theresa Coffey, the new Secretary of State. Just last week, I held meetings with Jeremy Wright, the MP for Kenilworth and Southend. We've had meetings with Sakebati as well recently. And we've got meetings coming up with Nadim Sahawi, which I'm looking forward to. And it's all about making sure that those people that matter know exactly what's going on in the sector. So talking about energy at the moment, you've obviously got the Energy Build Levy Scheme, which was discussed earlier on. Obviously, that's going to be coming to an end in the new year. So when we've been holding these meetings with politicians, we're trying to really lobby for the fact that farming is a sector that when the, when the support is streamlined, it needs to make sure it is still being supported. Because obviously farmers have been hit so hard through rising in feed prices, rising in fertiliser, rising in fuel. So at least make sure we can get the support because farmers have really hardly been hit. In terms of other information you can find, you can find a whole host of information on the NFU website. There's a big screenshot there of what you may find. We had a webinar last week with Mark Spencer, who was the new Agricultural Minister down in Westminster. So that was a fantastic meeting. We've got vlogs from Minette Batter, we've got vlogs from our NFU economists, really staying kind of where you are at the moment. We've got webinars with NFU Energy as well, like we just had. So there's a whole host of information available, which I really think members and non-members can take advantage of to really try and get an idea of where the, of where the world is at the moment. I also just wanted to highlight two fantastic organisations, which obviously it's okay not to be okay. At the moment, there are many people that are, that are struggling financially and have many worries. So I wanted to highlight the R A B I and the F C N, so the Royal Agricultural Institution and the Farming Community Network. They are two fantastic charities that are support, that are there to support the agricultural sector as a whole. So you don't have to be a farmer, you just have to be working in the agricultural sector and they are there. So F C N, they can have someone on the farm to support you, to speak to you face to face on any issues that you may find. And R A B I, same again, as well as having kind of financial grants available for you as well, if you are in dire need. You know, farming is a lonely place at times. So I think it's important to know that these people are there for you. So it's been a very tough year financially through, through drought and rising costs. So I think it's very important, these people are, people are aware of these organisations and through them and NFU, we are there to support all farmers in, in, in Warwickshire as a whole. And I think that's really what I need to say, Hadi.
Thank you very much. That's really sort of summed up the support that is available for those businesses that may well be struggling, those agricultural businesses. Are there any questions? I'm conscious of time and we've overrun. Andy.
Hi all. Very interesting. Thank you very much. Can you hear me, by the way?
Yes, we can.
Joshua spoke very well. And I've made a note to see if I could contact him, but then George has just said at the end, if it's energy related, contact him as well. So we're looking at a whole site. Sort of energy review really for our farm. We've got a small farm in, in Warwickshire, we are NFU members. We want a grid connection and we want to look at some solar. Where, where do I start? It's a bit of a minefield, to be honest. I think the industry that, you know, it's been said there's a lot of sharks in the industry. I would feel safer being guided by the NFU. You know, where do I start? Do I start with Joshua? Do I start with George? Do I go on the NFU Energy website or?
Yeah, it's probably, probably one for me, that is. So yeah, the first step would be an energy efficiency audit. But if you're looking to move on from that step, then I would definitely suggest contacting us, speaking to our team about the renewable energy solutions. And then what we'll start to do is we'll start to understand your site. So we'll understand whether you've got relevant roofs, the, the direction they're facing, your usage, your usage specifically between April to September, because that's when solar generation is going to be peak. So we'll analyse a lot of that data and then we'll put you in touch with a local improved, fully vetted installer, who will also essentially do the same thing. We'll pass them across what we've got, but they'll come out to site, do a site survey and so on. If not always a site survey, sometimes desk based now with the, the sort of drones you get are sufficient. Then they would start assessing that. And if you wanted to look to couple it with battery storage, they could look into that. If you haven't got half hourly data, we might need to put in some monitors to fully understand that. But if you've got half hourly data, then we can find that out pretty quickly, to be honest, with some of the mathematical modelling data. So yeah, that would be the first step to get in touch with us and we'll, we'll put you through the sort of channel. If you're not looking for the audit and the renewable energy solution and the return on investment on solar these days, I think it's, it's really essential for business to look at because I've seen some returns on investment that are as low as two years. So when you get a return on investment on something like that, and it's going to keep you in good stead for the future, I think.
Or do I get in touch with you, Verinda, or?
Yeah.
Or do I email you? Have you got an email address?
Yeah, I'll put it into the notes and if you got the chat, then I'll put it into there.
Got the chat, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'll put it into there now.
We'll be sending along all of the slides, which has got everybody's contact details as well after the session, along with the recording as well. So hopefully you'll have all of the contact details. Any queries or anything, please feel free to come directly to back to me as well. If there's any.
All right, brilliant. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Oh, one more. They're, they're telling me that they're not giving permission for ground mount panels at the moment, is that right? Or the ground mount panel space has, has gone.
Planning permission for those. So it does really depend on what you've got going on in your vicinity. If you've got a lot of neighbours who are going to think it's an eyesore, then they'll probably object to it and that's going to cause you problems. But yeah, that, that's the only thing with it, the planning permission. I have noticed relaxation though significantly for solar and planning. So previously, when, say, I've been working here for almost two years now. When I first started joining, getting solar in places like Wales, where they had areas of natural beauty and greenbelt lands, they were not being approved. But recently, we have seen areas of natural beauty get approved for solar. I think it, it's just essential, we need to move, we need to become sustainable as a country and especially farming as an industry as well.
Yep.
From memory, Andy, you're up in North Warwickshire, aren't you?
Correct, George.
Oh, yeah, I've met, I've met with North Warwickshire District Council quite recently, as well as Craig Tracy, U M P. And yeah, both have stipulated that, yeah, they're very much in support now of looking for kind of the green agenda and doing that. So I think you wanted to go through planning mission, but I would hope if they're following their word, then they would be supportive of it.
Great. As, as I mentioned in the presentation as well, we've seen, oh, it's imminent that wind turbines will get a relaxation on the planning as well. Recently in England, they've been very strict and stringent in terms of not allowing them. But we are going to see a relaxation there as well.
Fabulous. Thanks. Thank you.
Any more questions? No, I don't think there is. Well, thank you. I'd like to just take this opportunity to say thank you to all of our speakers today. It's been really insightful for me just to learn a little bit more as well. But thank you very much for everybody's time today. And again, as I mentioned, we'll be sending the slides across with the copy of the briefing that's been recorded. And it would be great to get some feedback as well of, of what you thought of the session. If it's something you'd like to see sort of going forward, what your, you know, future aspirations are, are on that. But yeah, if you could let us know for feedback, that'd be great. It helps us shape our future delivery as well. That'd be fantastic. But I would like to just say, if you are looking at sort of going down the road of renewables, et cetera, please do think of Warwickshire Recovery Investment Fund as well, because that's something that could help you to finance some of those diversifications that you, you might be sort of considering as well right now in terms of the green agenda. So thank you very much for everybody's time.
Thanks, Hadi.
Thank you. Thanks. Bye bye.
Thank you. Well done.